I'm going to call the meeting to order. Time is 6:35. If we could all stand for the pledge, please? Can Kevin, would you mind leading us?
Yeah, no problem. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under your heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, moving on to the agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Madam President.
Amy?
I move that tonight's agenda be adopted as printed and placed on file.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Gina. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Is there any board member who would like a consent agenda item to be removed and acted on separately? Saying none, can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam President.
Gina?
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. We have reached our first public commentary. This is for agenda items only. All right, I see no one approaching the mic. We'll move on to board correspondence. Griffin?
The only thing we received was the questions about the stadium renovations that were answered.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the Board of Education reports. Bedford Township Government, Amy?
Nothing needed to report.
Thank you. Bedford Township Park Board, Griffin?
Uh, yeah, just have a few things. A lot of work going on at car park right now. They have bids out for new tennis and pickleball courts over there. They're also redoing the field over there. Uh, I'm assuming that's the baseball field. I think they're looking for a new sponsor for that, by the way. The skate park at Parmley is shut down until they can work on the ramps and boards in there. And they're working on using some of their ARPA funds for new water fountains at each park. And if they can do that, then those will be replaced in the spring. That's all for that.
Okay, thanks Griffin. Michigan Association of School Boards, Megan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Policy Committee, Dee or Gina? Do you guys want to give it up? Okay.
Madam President, we also received our, um, on Wednesday, received our fall update from the O-Lutz. It's actually pretty brief, so I think we can combine it with, I'll look through it, but I think we can combine it with the, probably the winter and do it, do it probably December or so.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Dee and Gina. Monroe County Association of Board of Education, Amy?
Uh, nothing really big to report. There's a meeting on October 18th that I'll be attending, which is to set the agenda for the next two meetings for the year.
Okay.
A meeting to schedule meetings.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're, um, moving on to our superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. This evening, we are going to begin with an introduction. We have with us this evening, our state representative from our local area, Mr. Will Brock. Will reached out to me and we've met, I don't know, maybe a month ago, and he since has reached out and wanted to get in front of our board and our community and just introduce himself. If you have any questions for him legislatively speaking, or maybe something, something else, I guess, you can go ahead and, um, and ask him, but Representative Brock, the floor is yours, sir.
All right, thank you very much. My name is William Brock. I'm from Erie, just down the road. Please forgive me, I am a prodigy of Monroe Public School System. Please forgive me if I don't have the correct grammar or anything. But I do represent the 30th District, which is the city of Monroe and all South County, and then a few townships in Lenawee County. So, I got elected last year, started this spring, or I should say, the beginning of the year. I was out of town for eight months because of military, and I missed about six months of session, but I've been back since June and will be getting my hip replaced in November. So I'm very happy to be on the way to, I think, full health. But I, I graduated from an awful high school, attended college after the Army. I was a line worker for many years, working with DTE and then with Toledo Edison. I also had my master's in business administration, and I also own a business. And those are my drivers to become an elected official. I also have nine children, so there's a, we have a lot at stake here in Michigan. I love Michigan, and I like just introducing myself to different boards and different groups of people so they understand just a little bit of my background, as well as, you know, hopefully what I can do or how I can help you. I was a trustee at the community college for six years. That ended this last December, and then, you know, I became a state rep. So I served on the college board, you know, determining the finances and all the, all the things you guys do. You guys do a great service to the community, working here on the board for Bedford Public Schools, so I appreciate that. I'm sure Dr. Schultz appreciates it too, so thank you for that opportunity to present myself. Really what I want to do is just make myself available. I did give you each a card that has my cell phone number on it. That's my personal cell, please don't, you know, just put it on Facebook or anything, but, you know, I, I do that to be available. As I go to various meetings and I meet people in our townships and in the cities, you know, there's things that I, as a state rep, can do to assist. And usually it's just linking up individuals, whether at the city or township level, with someone at the state level that can help them solve their issue or help solve their problem. So I do, I am working on a number of bills, but, you know, that's not why I'm here, to really talk about what I'm working on or what bills we're trying to get passed or not get passed. It's really just to make myself available. Most people know that I'm a veteran, so I always try to make that available as well. I've done a number of speaking engagements at schools and things for veteran events. So I tell people, I'm, I'm like a three-sided person. You know, I'm a, I'm an elected official, I'm a father with a lot of kids, and I'm a veteran, and if you can utilize me in any of those ways, please, please do so. Otherwise, that's really all I had to say unless you had some questions for me.
Nine children?
I was going to say.
Griffin only has six, so congratulations.
I claim all the ugly ones. Now, my youngest is four and my oldest is 24, and I have three children that live out of state. They all moved to Tennessee, so I see that sucking, leaving the state personally, I feel bad, so.
Sorry, my son left too, but on behalf of the board, if you, if you'd like to look at our programs here in Bedford, we do have the number one ranked district and high school in the region, so that would be a wonderful opportunity for your family. But in all seriousness, I have, I have spoken with Mr. Brock, and even while he was away, I spoke with his aide on numerous occasions. Mike does a great job for you on your behalf, and as a former, I think, state senator himself, he has, he has a wealth of knowledge, and he's helped us through some issues, including when we had to appeal for the stadium reconstruction and the heating issue. When we won the appeal, we, we were assisted on, on that by his office, so I'd like to welcome you here, and I'm glad you're back in town, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. I'm back to stay, but yeah, I have two staffers, Mike Gachka, who is very, he's been up in Lansing 30 years, and he hasn't drank the Kool-Aid either, so that's what I love about him. He's there because he wants to be. He could make a lot more money not being a staffer. He could be a lobbyist, he could do all sorts of things, but he, he wants to be a staffer to assist a legislator to do their job. So I really appreciate Mike, and Andrew is the guy that answers phones, so if you ever call up there, that's who you'll get. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity, and I'm going to stick around too, so I'll be available for questions afterward as well.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your time today, and the state's treating us pretty well right now, but we'll keep these numbers just in case. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our instructional items, and it looks like we have a couple for you. Dr. French?
Thank you. First of all, we have the student handbook revisions on attendance and truancy. Recently, the county prosecutor made some changes to their protocol, and county districts have been revising based on those. So just to summarize, that includes the, you can see through the document, the number of absences where notifications would go out or truancy processes would begin. And then the, the big part of it is the, the big highlight on, I believe it's the second full page, that outlines the new process, once that, those thresholds are, are achieved. And the la, the last page just reflects some changes per state laws and policies in terms of what counts as a tardy and what counts as an absence. Frankly, Bedford's gotten dinged because we kept attendance and tardy so well before. I mean, not that we're not keep, not that this will make us not keep it well, it's just, it clarifies how we count a tardy and how we count an absence. So welcome, I would welcome any questions you have. Yes?
Hold on, hold on. We need to get a motion. Oh, we're not voting on this, it's just discussion?
Yeah, it's discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I love it. I just noticed one error here. The second paragraph underneath.
Is am I missing the?
Nope.
Oh, I got that one, so.
No, you got that one. Good job. It says nine allotted days for truancy purposes, and it looks like it changed to 14 allotted days, the second paragraph under parent contact. So I don't know if we have to change that to 14 allotted days. It's spelled out instead of the number, that might be why.
Amy, should I?
Underneath here, yeah, the second, yeah, second sentence, second paragraph. It says nine allotted days, and I think it needs to be 14 to go with the paragraph above it.
Yes, you're correct. Thanks, thanks for catching that. It's okay.
And the reason it's not being, and we're not asking to vote on it, is it because they were, they were legal changes in the sense, so we don't have an option? So what, we wanted to bring it in front of the board to get it on record that we are following what the county has set up.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. French, I think you have another item?
Yeah, the next item is we recently had readmission committee, which included a couple of board members. Our high school principal, a teacher from the high school, and a parent consider the readmission for a student, and they recommended a conditional readmission. So you can see that described in the documents there. And that just is coming to the board for formal approval this evening.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve conditional readmission of a student?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education approve the conditional readmission of the student as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Think I heard Dee. Thanks Dee. Any discussion? Thank you to those board members who were part of that, that readmission hearing. Saying no, no questions, we will do a roll call vote for this. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Dee? Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our personnel items.
Madam President, we have three personnel items to present to the board tonight. We have the consideration to accept from the Bedford Virtual Academy, which is our high school online academy, the resignation of Elizabeth Taylor, followed by the consideration to accept the hiring of her replacement, Mr. Tom Regalotto, and also to consider the BEA resignation of JRE first grade teacher, Haley Textor from Jackman Road Elementary.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll handle each of these separately from a board perspective, so can I get a motion for the first consideration to accept BVA resignation?
Madam President?
Megan?
I move that the Board of Education accept the BVA resignation of Elizabeth Taylor as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Think I heard Amy Drehorst. Thank you. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Can I get a consideration to accept the BVA new hire?
Madam President?
Amy?
I move that the Board of Education accept Thomas Regalotto, BVA instructor at the senior high as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Dee. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. And then lastly, a motion for the consideration for the BEA resignation.
Madam President?
Gina?
I move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Haley Textor, first grade instructor at Jackman Road Elementary as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Thanks Amy. Bissell? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks Alex. Moving on to our policy items and our second reading. Are you going to walk us through this?
I will. This, at the last meeting, the board had a first reading for the policies that were out of date or needed changes based on updated laws, and the, the only change I've had recommended by a board member since the first reading was a verbiage change that has since been made and reattached. It was just a, a small thing. It's not, uh, without any other changes, I would ask that the board complete the second reading this evening and approve the updates to the board policies.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I get a motion for the consideration to approve the second reading of volume 37, number two, February 2023?
Madam President?
Griffin?
I move that the Board of Education approve the second reading of volume 37, number two, February 2023, and all policies related rescinded as recommended.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Did I hear Dee-ish maybe? Thanks Dee. Thanks Griffin. Any comments? Okay, saying none, this is a roll call vote. Amy Bissell?
Yes.
Amy Drehorst?
Yes.
Dee?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks Policy Committee for that one. Okay, we've reached our second public commentary. Is there any public commentary at this time? And I'll just mention that as you approach, there, is there still a sign in sheet up there? Okay, so, oh, you already signed it, okay, so.
Yes, I did.
Public commentary, we'll sign in. We do allow three minutes for public commentary, and I'll just remind anyone making public commentary that we are very specific about delivering public commentary, and I ask that you not call any board members, teachers, or members of the community to task. And other than that, I have three minutes, so thank you for joining us.
Can you hear me okay? Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is Deana Vanderpool. I live at 221 West Elm in Monroe, Michigan. I'm a retired teacher and coach from Erie Mason and Summerfield High School. I'm here tonight in support of Jody Menor. I've known Jody for over 40 years as an athlete, coach, and friend. I, like many, was in total disbelief when I saw in the Monroevening News the headline that she was released. Of course, we all know that was a lie spread by someone. I too, over the past two weeks, have wondered a couple of things. One, why was Coach Menor not able to continue coaching as an investigation began? Is she some kind of a threat? Was she already guilty of something? Two, what's taking so long? Here she is in limbo while her team plays on without her. Three, I personally think it's shameful at the level of disrespect being shown to Coach Menor. What does she have to do? Develop one of the premier high school volleyball programs in the state? Check. Win countless championships? Check. Be honored as the winningest high school volleyball coach in the nation? Check, check. I was here last year as your school honored her. Send countless Bedford young women on to play college volleyball, many of them receiving scholarships. Unless there's some kind of an ulterior motive to drag this out and release her when the season is over. She can't even come on the ground, speak to her team and coaches, and they can't even talk to her. As a taxpaying citizen, she couldn't even attend this meeting tonight. Did she lose her First Amendment rights somehow to the freedom of speech while this investigation goes on? I'm sure her former players and coaches are being contacted and questioned while she can't defend herself against charges instigated, I'm guessing by an unhappy parent or two. Jody is loyal to Bedford to a fault. It's been weeks, her friends and family have been trying to get her to do something proactive. No, she's thinking the school is working in her best interest. Are you, is someone? I hope you do the right thing and restore her as coach as soon as possible as your investigation continues. Again, not sure why it's taking so long, I can't imagine, and most of us don't really even know all the facts for it, but it's just like a hush-hush thing. I consider Jody a friend. Listen, she's tough, but like I said, she's put volleyball for Bedford on the map. It would be nothing without her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Teri Dojack. I'm Jody's sister, and we're all here to support Jody, to find out what in the world is taking so long. It has been six weeks and nothing has been done. She finally had a meeting today with people and found out a little bit of what's going on, but that's uncalled for. At the beginning, she was told there was a complaint made against her, and she was put on a non-disciplinary leave. What the hell does that mean? She can't do anything? It's non-disciplinary. She is being disciplined. At that time, she was banned from all school properties and was not to talk with anyone associated with volleyball. She has been coaching for 40 years. Volleyball is her life. Jody has many nieces, nephews, and former players and friends whose kids play with community ed. She is not allowed to go watch them play because she's not allowed to be on any property in Bedford. Is she a threat to these children that she's going to watch play? I don't think so. In fact, I am sure she is not. This seems excessive. Jody has built this legacy at Bedford, and you don't become the winningest coach in the nation by being warm and fuzzy. Yeah, she is tough, but she's not mean. She would not do anything that was mean or harmful to anyone. She was brought up to follow the rules and do the right thing. She is definitely a rule follower. We've tried to have her confront people and find out what's going on, and she's sitting back sure that whoever's in charge of us is doing the right thing. I'm not sure they have her best interests. She is, she doesn't just coach volleyball, she is also trying to prepare these young women to be ready for the real world. I am sure there are many families in Bedford who appreciate, are appreciative of the scholarships that their kids were awarded through the years. I don't think you will find another person who will be as dedicated to the Bedford volleyball program as Coach Menor. So we are all here tonight to support Coach Menor. We want her back doing what she loves, and that's coaching. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri.
Hello, my name is Diane Tuller. I live at 409 Godfrey Avenue in Monroe, and I also have known Jody for over 45 years. I have been a volleyball coach at St. Mary Catholic Central for 23 years, so we're fellow coaches. We were fellow teammates on soft, in softball, and I actually played against her when she played college volleyball at Michigan State. So I've known her for a long time, and as both of those individuals have said already, she is a person with the utmost integrity of anybody I've ever seen. As a region coach in this region, it's almost impossible to get a fellow coach to represent the region and to get people, their, their kids recognized in the state. She's always the one that steps in. She's always the one that holds the meeting to make sure that all of the kids, the volleyball players in this region are recognized the way that they need to be. And I have to say, I'm a mean coach too, so I know what kind of things are said by parents sometimes, and, and I know that I have always treated my athletes as not only athletes, but as somebody that I care about. And I care about that they're ready to face the world when they get out there, that they're not going to have a parent who is going to be there when their boss tells them they're not doing their job. So hopefully, you will take into consideration, I think that the way that this has been handled, as both of them have said, is very disrespectful. And with her record and the things that she's done for this community and put Bedford on the map, basically put volleyball on the map for this, the east side of the state, I just think that it's been handled very inappropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Any additional public commentary? And while, and while he walks up to the podium, I'll just also remind that the board or the administration do not respond to public commentary real time, that we will. If there are follow-up items, that this, it will be directed towards the superintendent or appropriate administration to follow on.
Sure. My name's Luke Kaiser, 2585 Sandpiper Road. It's been a while, but my daughter played for Jody Menor, and started back in third grade or fourth grade with Borderline, which Jody set up and ran with the help of other people, and continued on through college. I say through college because my daughter's ambition was to get to a div one school and play volleyball. You don't do that with poor coaching. Jody has high standards, she has high expectations, she's demanding, and she demands discipline. And that's everything I wanted out of my coach. My daughter came home crying on many occasions because she didn't like what Jody was doing as far as sending her into the bathroom to stare at herself in the mirror because of her attitude, and my daughter does have an attitude. But on top of all that, Jody's family is her volleyball team every year. She does care about them all personally. My daughter went off to play volleyball div one, went to a school in North Carolina, called us up crying because their team's practice wasn't as hard as Jody's was, and their discipline wasn't as good as Jody's, and they were eating doughnuts and going to fast foods, which is just unheard of. We called Jody and talked to her about how to respond to that, and she actually drove all the way down to North Carolina to sit down and talk to my daughter and talk her about quitting volleyball, her one big love. And I don't know too many high school coaches that would do that. I just don't. And I don't understand what the, what, six weeks is a long time to be not, this, the allegations cannot be anything so drastic that, one, she has to be isolated from everybody, and, two, it shouldn't take six weeks, I wouldn't think, to investigate. It should be a pretty simple case, I would think, and I'm not, I'm sure it's disgruntled parents and disgruntled, uh, players or ex-players or players that didn't make the team. We saw that through 12 years of volleyball. It's going to happen, but she's tough, and she wants the best for our school, she wants the best team that she can put out there, and that makes her have to make tough decisions. So if, I, all I can say is I have no more respect for anybody in this world than Jody Menor, as far as her integrity goes and the way that she runs her practices, the way she runs her teams, and she's a second mom to these girls, so I just hope that things can work out here and we can get things going here and get her back on this team, because it's a disservice to her and a disservice to the team that she's not out there coaching when she needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure, I think you came in after I gave the, no, you can go. Go, go, go. No, you can go. Go, go, go. I just wanted to remind the new folks who walked in that we need you to sign in, tell us who you are, and then we do allow three minutes for public commentary. And my request is that you don't call any administrator, board member, teacher, or community member to task, or I will ask you to stop speaking.
Perfect. My name is Gillian Salas, 8500 Adler Road. I am a teacher, a first-grade teacher at Douglas Road Elementary. And full disclosure, I am also Miss Menor's niece. I have had the pleasure of working with her both in volleyball and in the classroom. My own children have participated in volley tots and volley kids for the last five years. During the 2021-2022 school year, when our volunteers were limited in our building, she became our acting classroom volunteer for both myself and the other first-grade classroom across the hall, donating her time two to three days a week for two to three hours, working on sight words with both of our classes with a total of over fifty kids for the entire school year. I just want the board to know, she's more than a volleyball coach in our district. She went to games for the kids in my class. She bought Christmas presents for all fifty kids within that group. Afterwards, those kids would stop and say hello to her. I just feel it's really sad that she is not able to be at any of the other sporting events. She's not able to be in our schools volunteering. And I just want you to know, she's more than just a volleyball coach. Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian.
Hello, my name is Becky Farr, and I currently live 8585 O'Dowling in Anston, Michigan. But I lived in Bedford in the community for over thirty years. And I'm here tonight because I also would like to speak in support of not only Jody Menor as a coach for nearly forty years, just for Bedford, which is amazing, but for the program that she has nurtured and developed and has become, you know, a statewide premier program. She's got all kinds of accolades, as we've spoke to, and I'm sure everybody knows about nationally. Our daughter played in her program from the youngest level for like eight years. Fantastic experience as a parent. I too had my agitations at times. Always took the approach first with the player and how they felt and how they were doing with the program. And that always resolved it for me because my daughter was fine, you know. They understood what the program was about and what Jody was trying to do with it. And so it's, it's sad for me to see, especially with the advent of social media, how things catch fire and go and really beat down on someone who has committed forty years with passion for Bedford Community Schools and the community in general. So understanding, which I couldn't find on the website. I got on the website and I tried to find like a handbook, an athletic handbook or something to read about what the process is that you're all trying to walk through. And I couldn't find anything. But knowing that apparently when a complaint comes in, there is swift, immediate action taken. And I would just hope that there would be enough respect for this outstanding program and for the person who has elevated it to that level to have a swift action in resolving it, to not have that firestorm of innuendo and rumor that goes on. I have a personal stake in wanting to and wanted to, hopefully, have Jody back for next week's match, which is the volley for the year. That's become very personal to me over the last sixteen months. And I'm still hoping, hoping to see her next week so I can celebrate with her. So thank you for the time, and I need to sign this form right here?
Just sign in, please. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public commentary?
I'm Linda Lenhart, and my address is 10277 Summerfield Road, Temperance, Michigan. We've lived here for about twenty-five years now. I've always been so proud to be from Bedford, talk up the school, talk up the sports, talk it all up. And this is so upsetting that something like this could happen here, that someone could just get singled out and just have her feet taken out from under her, someone so dedicated to Bedford. And I'm not just talking volleyball. I am talking, she is at Bedford. She's such a cheerleader for our schools and retired teacher. And it's just unimaginable that this could just happen. And I just hope that it gets resolved soon to make us all look better. Like I said, it's a bad look for Bedford. It really is. And I would hope you guys could move things along here. It just seems that, like Becky said, if you can, if you can take the action to get her out that fast, then I think the action to get her back in can be, let's wrap this up. It's getting a little silly. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Have a good time. Any additional commentary? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public commentary and move on to our announcements and comments for this evening. We'll start with our administrator, if that can be kept. Thank you, Mr. Weber.
So I have a couple of things to update everyone on. So school is underway, and at DRE right now, fourth grade is getting ready for their Lansing corporate travel. They're heading out November 2nd. They just had a successful PTO event, Mourning with Misses. They had over five hundred parents and students there before school started with donuts and juice. Their PTO Scholastic Book Fair is being held October 16th through the 20th. They plan on having a family night to encourage literacy as a special event as well. And then Trunk or Treat is being held at DRE on Tuesday, October 24th, from 6:30 to 7:30. JRE is very appreciative of the cafeteria project, which is now complete. They said it looks amazing. The Mini Mules tailgate is, they want to invite people to join them at our JRE PTO Mini Mule Tailgate, which is Friday, September 29th at 5:30 PM. And head over to the football game after that. There will be hot dogs, chips, and water. The meeting is across from the main stadium entrance. Reduced-price coupons for students will be available at the tailgate. The cost is $2 per student at the gate. Adults are $6. And then the fourth graders are heading to Lansing. This will be going on for JRE on November 15th. And then the JRE Fun Run is on Wednesday, October 4th. They've already raised $15,000. Their goal is $30,000. And this money will be used for field trips, enrichment, playground, and much more. And then MRE is starting off on a great note. Their testing window is just about complete, and tutoring invitations have gone out for their very small after-school program. And their Mrs. Fields fundraiser kicks off on October 2nd, so Monday. And the PTO is working on planning out more events for the rest of the year. And then the Trunk or Treat for MRE will be from 6 o'clock until 7 o'clock on October 26th. So a lot of opportunities to get those costumes on. At the junior high, sixth grade is going to the zoo. They have, all their activities and sports are in full swing. And they had a packed open house. They had a really cool event, if you had a chance to see that. And it was sponsored by their PTO. It was a beautiful event. At the high school, homecoming is next week. We have the Spirit Week during the week, along with our annual Big Ball game. We have over one hundred girls signed up for the annual Big Ball festivities. Our senior class is hopeful to win and be perfect in their Big Ball record because they won as juniors. We also have our court activities and voting along with the dance. And then our student section was just named the Student Section of the Week by BCSN. This week will be a holiday out, so I'm sure you'll see all kinds of festivities if you come to the game on Friday. They won't disappoint you. And then at the start of the year, and Dr. Schultz mentioned this, Bedford High School was selected by the U.S. News &amp; World Report as the best high school in Monroe County. And I just wanted to kind of say on behalf of the high school, this is truly a district award as that's a reflection of the hard work and dedication by all of our staff and our entire district and our community and our parents. This is great work in the home, great work at the board level, Smith Road, Douglas Road, Monroe Road, and Jackman Elementary, as well as both of our secondary staffs. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll move on to public relations. Sandy? She's behind the wall. Takes her just a minute.
Good evening. Public relations-wise, the biggest thing that I'm going to be working on in the next month is getting information out about the renewal of the Non-Homestead Millage and the heavily rollback, which are a pair of companion proposals that will be on the ballot in November. We encourage everybody to go out and vote on that day. Actually, behind the wall where I was sitting, there are numerous boxes with about four hundred pounds of postcards that will be mailed next week. Lisa's holding up a sample of those. And those cost about thirty cents to produce, to have printed, and mailed. That includes the postage on it. But to get that cheap postage rate, we do a lot of prepping in-house for each of the mailing routes. And then I have to give a huge shout-out to our Facilities Department personnel who then take those four hundred pounds of postcards to all of the post offices in our local area to drop them off. So Sarah Adamson, whoever gets roped into helping her on that day, gets her workout in on that every time I do a mailing. So I'm very appreciative of that support. And for those that are in the room tonight, there's also a flyer in the box with the agendas. So if you're looking for some information to take with you tonight, you can help yourself to one of those flyers. And pretty much everything that's on the postcard is just in a single-page format. But you'll see that at the end of next week at your homes. So, well, we'll be placing ads. We'll be doing some social media information going out. We'll be emailing parents with information within our family communication. So we'll be getting the word out on that as well. And one of the things that many people don't understand about this is it's not a tax on a person's primary residence. It's not something that directly comes out of your pocket. And if you were thinking, oh, this is an opportunity for me to lower my tax bill, I'm not going to vote in favor of it. It's not going to lower your taxes. And because it's not on your home property either, if you vote in favor of it for its passage, it does not make your taxes go up. Primarily, our commercial property and rental properties are the people that contribute towards this. And it's part of our operating budget. We get funding for our operating budget from basically two places, primarily from the state and our school aid foundation. And then they ask school districts across the state, every school district does this, to put this on the ballot periodically. This is a renewal. It's not anything new, but it's something we've been doing since Proposal A passed as part of our way to get the maximum amount of operating funding that we can, that the state allows. Because we cannot put a levy on the ballot to pay for our day-to-day expenses. So this is about, not quite ten percent, of our operating budget. And that's, and then the rest of it, we'll be just bragging about all the great things that happen in the district on a regular basis. One of the things that I hope our community gets a chance to do in the coming month is to check out our auditorium renovations that have happened. We've got some concerts upcoming. The band and the choir and the orchestra will all be doing their fall festivals of music programming and have concerts coming up later on in October. So that's basically my PR report.
Thanks, Sandy. Do you want to go ahead and move on to the PTO?
Sure. I had to cross a lot of things off because Mr. Weber covered a lot of them for me. I do have a couple of things I can still mention. The, all of the elementary schools are going to team up together to express appreciation for our bus-driving transportation staff later on in October when it is National Bus Safety Week. So they'll pick a day and do something special, but I'm not going to say exactly what because I don't want to ruin any surprises. But they can, they can look forward to knowing that they are loved and appreciated by, by the PTO in our district. Douglas Road is doing their cookie sale, the Otis Spunkmeyer Cookie Sale up through Wednesday. So if you have a hankering for any fresh baked cookies later on, find one of the DRE students and place your order by Wednesday. Their next PTO meeting will be on October 5th at 3:45 PM. Jackman Road's next PTO meeting will be on October 10th at 3:45 PM. They will also be doing a book fair in October. That will be later. That'll be October 23rd through the 27th, and they will have their family night on the 25th. Monroe Road's next meeting won't be until the first day of November, so we'll have another opportunity to talk about their next meeting. In the meantime, on the third Thursday of the month, you can help support their activities by heading to Mancino's and dine to donate option there on that third Thursday of the month. The junior high, well, they did a welcome-back dance, and Mr. Lipinski DJ'd for that, so that was a lot of fun for the kids and everybody that attended. The PTO wants to make sure that the parent volunteers and also the custodial staff who help with setup and cleanup for everything that they do are greatly appreciated. Their next meeting will be October 11th at 6:30, and they're looking to fill some vacant chair and committee assignments. So if you have any interest in doing that, please reach out to any of the administrators or PTO officers to get involved. One of the things on their agenda, they'll be looking to discuss how they're going to support the sixth-grade field trip that's upcoming and review plans based on the funds that they've raised recently. And the junior high staff would like the PTO to know that they really appreciate the curating machine and the supplies that the PTO has placed in their staff lounges. So they enjoy that, and thank you for doing that. And that's all I have to say for today.
Awesome. Thanks, Sandy. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on to our executive cabinet members, and we'll start with Alex, please.
I just wanted to thank our staff, leadership teams across the district for another great start, a great September, kicking off another successful school year. On my end, we're doing our best to fill positions as quickly as possible as they open. And yeah, it's a great start. Congratulations to the high school, Kevin. I love the way you put that in such a humble way. It is truly a community award. That's a great way to look at it because our entire community should be really proud of that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Alex. Dr. French?
Thank you. I met with all the principals yesterday. And Mr. Weber couldn't be with us, but they all attested to a solid start to the school year, so excited about that. Just wanted to... Just wanted to talk a little bit, give you an update, we're ready to go, beginning with some professional learning on November 1st, and then into the second and third quarters with our English Language Arts pilot at the elementary level, you've heard me talk about it a little bit before. And it's great to see the research base that is supporting this come to the forefront. It's been around a while, but districts and even states across the country are embracing it, and it's showing great promise with students. For example, Mississippi, most states could usually say, well, we're better than Mississippi in our student achievement, but no longer. They've gone from just about last in reading achievement up to the middle of the pack in a fairly short order by systematically implementing what's known now as the science of reading. So, what is that? That's setting a good base of phonemic awareness and phonics, which helps students decode the English language fluently. And then building their background knowledge, building them, helping them acquire a wide background knowledge, which is what gives you access to a particular text that you're reading. So, we're going to, teachers in each elementary building have chosen to pilot one of two products that supports the science of reading. So, at the end of their pilot experience, we'll be able to compare notes and hopefully make the best decision for any set of materials. So, we're excited about that coming up. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Tom?
Yes, just real quick, I wanted to welcome Mr. Brooks, say thank you for your service. Custodial staffing wise, we've hired, we had three own positions, we now have one open position, and I'm interviewing two more people for that position. So, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be fully staffed with four to five subs, which we haven't had since I've started. Looking forward to that. Auditorium project, currently working on the wiring in the new sound room and installation of a new door for the sound room. Stadium project, contractors completing punch list items, the victory bell is currently being sandblasted and powder coated by, I think, previous Bedford grads. Auditorium project, already talked about. Softball project, I don't know if you noticed, but the grass is growing on the new JV softball field. It's nice and green, that'll thicken up. Food service, over at the junior high, the brand-new walk-in freezer is installed and currently being used. As it was looked there this morning, it was at four degrees, so everything's nice and cold. And I will be attending the Mission School Business Officials 25th Annual Facilities and Operations Directors Conference this Sunday through Tuesday in Thompsonville, Michigan. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Tom, and Chris, last but not least.
The business office continues to work on audit and answering our auditor requests, and we are moving forward with the time clock system, and I think we'll have that implemented by the end of the month and work through our testing phase and move forward with that. That's all.
Awesome, thank you. And Dr. Schultz?
Just briefly, just like to thank all the staff members in the district for the hard work. It's been a very smooth start to the school year for many of our students and families. Our administration teams, Kevin, yourselves and your colleagues from the group have done a wonderful job in, I think, making families feel welcome. And some of the events that I'm seeing either haven't been done a while or are being updated to new and more family-friendly activity-type events, so that's exciting for the staff. I'd like to thank those individuals that attended the Bravo Bash on the 18th, which was held at Charlie Mops. As of today, and I say as of today because Charlie Mops is donating 15% of the revenue for the next three Mondays as well. We are over $16,000 in raised, and those funds will go directly to the auditorium project, increasing technology components, as well as some of the other aesthetic pieces that will be completed. So, make sure everybody donated online and/or attended the dinner or luncheon, and the board members who helped out with that, thank you so much. It was a lot of work, but it was actually fun at the end. So, thank you all.
Okay, that's it, okay, thank you. All right, we'll start with the board members, and Megan?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind Bedford families with respect to the election coming up, that I just received my absentee ballot option in the mail, so I was able to select that I wanted to vote absentee in this election. So, it makes it nice and easy, I can do it at home, and I can read every issue very carefully instead of feeling pressured at the polls. So, if you want to vote absentee, and so that you can vote for Bedford Public Schools, you can request your ballot now. That's everything I have.
Thanks Megan, Griffin?
First, I would just like to thank the audience for coming. Usually, we're sitting up here in front of empty chairs, so we appreciate all of you. I know, like Lisa said, it may look like we're just sitting here, stone-faced, but that's how we do in order to maintain some kind of semblance of order. But we appreciate you all coming out, for sure. I know it's not easy standing at the podium, I've done it, we've all done it, so thank you for coming out. Also, thank you, Mr. Brock. Someone finally beat me, like I said earlier. I'm not going to be catching up, just saying. The junior high open house I went to, and I don't know if anyone realizes the hard work that Amy puts into everything over at the junior high. Amy Bissell, yes. I went there, I actually went there an hour early, because I had the time wrong, but the whole vibe was just good. It was just a good vibe. You know, I've been to events there, and there's just something about this one that was just felt different, like we had all the food trucks there, everyone, the kids were selling pops on the side for their organizations, and we had spiritware being sold, and it was just a great event. Also, last thing for me, when I first started on this board, the first day of school, back in 2019, I think I reported that I still had three kids at home. This is the first year that I have no kids at home. All the kids are in school now, and very quiet at the house during the day. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks Griffin. Amy, Drehorse?
Thank you, I will just, I'd like to issue a reminder, Sandy mentioned it in her remarks, and part of our consent agenda was to acknowledge National School Bus Safety Week that's coming up. Right along as we talk about safety, I'd like to remind parents who have children who ride their bikes to school, to talk to them about bicycle safety, particularly kids that are driving, riding their bikes to the high school or the junior high. It's dark out there now, in the morning. They're not seen, they don't remember where to cross, when to cross, maybe they're not on the right side of the road, their clothes are dark, they don't have reflectors. All of those things are unsafe, now add to the fact that a lot of the people who are driving in that area are teenagers who don't have a lot of experience looking out for those types of kids. So, everybody, you know, just pay a little closer attention to safety, we don't want anything to happen. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you Amy, Amy Bissell?
I just want to say thank you to all of our staff and our parents and our volunteers this year. It really has been a great start off. That's it.
Thanks Amy, Gina?
Just wanted to say welcome to Mr. Brock and thank you for your service, it's really nice to meet you, and I will not blow up your cellphone or post it on Facebook, I promise. Other than that, I'm really looking forward to getting into the auditorium, seeing the updates, hearing the orchestra, the band, the choir, and those are in October, I believe. So, those should be on the website. And that's it.
Thanks Gina, Dee?
I also would like to thank Mr. Brock for coming and thank you for your service. I'd also like to thank the audience, it's so nice to have somebody in those chairs. We're usually completely empty, and thank you for your comments. I would like to thank Dr. Schultz, Annette, and Sandy for the hard work that they put into this Bravo Bash. The Bates family, again, came through, their generosity is amazing. And to raise $16,000, that's less that comes out of our general fund for our auditorium, which definitely needed it. And thank you to the whole staff, thank you to the cabinet members. Looks like it's a good start this year. So, thank you all, have a good evening.
Thanks Dee. I'll round this out by saying, again, I do appreciate the comments in the audience coming today. It's important for the board to hear your comments, even if we can't act on them or respond to them. I do appreciate when community members come in and share information with us, so thank you, it's time out of your day. I want to back up to the consent agenda as well, this is a particular one. When we do the consent agenda, we have the information and we can see it, but oftentimes, if you're not familiar with consent agendas and the items on there, you may not see or hear. This particular month is wrought with a lot of, not, they're all important to me in the board, but this particular month, I just wanted to mention a couple of them that are either weeks of recognition or months. And the first one being National Bullying Prevention Month, our district does, and I know Dr. French will, through Sandy, provide the board with opportunities on things the district is doing to support that prevention month. There's also Character Counts, that's a critically important program. All three of my children still remember Character Counts Weeks, where they learn about things like respect and other things that are important to our elementary students to be introduced to and moving into as adulthood. Fire prevention, Bus Safety Week, we've talked about, National School Lunch, the men and women who help serve our students in the new cafeterias. It's just, and then there's United Way Month. So, there's a lot going on this month, just coming back to school, that I wanted to take a minute just to make sure that others, should you have any questions, you can certainly go to our website to look at any of those things that we, as the board, pass as a part of our consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting. I will also mention that Dee mentioned those involved with the Bravo Bash. Dee also played a very important role, so Dee, thank you. If you bought or bid on a bag, a box, or a basket that was wrapped in plastic, Dee did all of those, put those together. So, Dee, thank you for your work on that, as well as Carl Yors and the rest of the administration that helped out. That's no small, it's still growing, because we have a couple more weeks of donations from Charlie Mops, and that was something put together pretty quickly. And it was a Monday night fundraiser, which typically you'd think that's not the best day to have it, but it was well-attended, and I think people kind of liked it because it didn't take up time on their weekend. So, thank you again for the idea and the work around it. I also just want to say thank you to our, to, again, our facilities group, because we had, I'm from the class of 88, and we just had our 35th, I said 40, do math, our 35th class reunion a couple of weeks ago. And we had the opportunity, there was a fairly large group to tour kind of the high school facility grounds, so that some of the graduates have moved away and they had an opportunity to come back. And some of them were athletes that use facilities, they use the auditorium with soiree and things like that. And the high praise and the amount of just excitement that they had in the pictures that they took and the sharing that they did back, and some of them brought their family members and looked around and kind of relived. So, the, everything looks fantastic, and again, my congratulations to the facilities group for, and I know others pull some weight there as well, but it was well-received, I think. I would like to do more open houses for community members, so people can begin seeing, and maybe once the auditorium is done, we can look at doing that, because the alumni certainly appreciated it. And I'll close with Amy, it's love Amy Day. So, Amy Drehorse, she is a volunteer that pulls together all of the concessions at the Friday night football games, volunteers, whether they show or not show, or get more volunteers, everything that goes in and out, Amy is a part of. And so, Amy, I wanted to just thank you and recognize you for, that is no easy task. If you've been to any football games and see how fast those lines go, gather, and then how fast she and the rest of those volunteers get people through, they're moving a lot of product, which again, is a fundraiser for our district. So, specifically supporting the band and orchestra. So, thank you Amy, I appreciate all your work as well. All right, so, thank you very much to everyone that has been here today, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Thanks Gina, is there support? Thanks Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion carries, thank you.